Welcome, everybody. I will call the meeting to order. First order of business is pledge allegiance. I'd ask if you could stand if you're able and join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, everybody. Next item on our agenda is student representative, Mr. McCarthy.
Yesterday was the kickoff meeting for student council for members of the class of 2022. Students were introduced to their first workshops, to different roles of the student council, and they played a fun game to end the night. Thank you to the hundred students who went to the Jimmy Fund Walk this Sunday in Wellesley, making over six thousand sandwiches in order to support the walkers. Thank you to Chase Holyoke, Heidi Creashen, Mr. Brandigan, and Mr. Siciliano for representing Middleborough High School Student Council at the annual president's dinner tonight. Tomorrow, MHS will go gold in order to support the awareness of pediatric cancer. Students will receive gold ribbons and we will have a table set up with gold bandanas, face paint, and Mardi Gras beads available. The theme for tomorrow night's football game against Rockland is "Go Gold" as well. Middleborough High School's newest club, called Club Us, which stands for Club Unified School, kicked off with a meeting last Tuesday. This meeting was with many of the captains and leaders of other clubs in the school, but will soon be extended to the entire school for membership. The focus of the club is ensuring a unified school environment for all students, especially those with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And yesterday, we had the first practice for the new unified basketball team. I'm a partner on their team. There's two other partners right now with a few more signing up. And then like six or seven students with intellectual disabilities. So what it is, is we play together on a basketball team. We have five games. The first one is October eighteenth. It's at home, homecoming week. It's coached by Mr. Carroll, Mr. Dizel. And it's the first year of this program, so we're really looking to start it off strong. And then two Saturdays ago, I was able to attend the MASCE Student Leadership Conference with about thirteen other school committee representatives from other towns and cities and schools in the Commonwealth. And it was basically a roundtable-type discussion. First, we sat in on the roles of the school committee to get a better idea of that. Then they took us to a separate room with some of the members of the state executive board for MASCE, and we had a group discussion about what concerns us as student representatives. And from there, the conversation was basically just led by the issues that concerned other students. I presented the idea of the college boot camp that we do in the summer, where students can write their college essays before school. The idea of the three college planning nights, one of them is tonight. And the idea of the scholarship booklet as three pressing ideas, because none of the other schools had those ideas. So I felt that it was a strength of our school, and I saw all the students frantically writing it down as I presented it, so it's a props to our guidance department. And I think realizing that a lot of the issues other schools have, we don't have in this district due to the work of everyone in the district to make sure everything runs smoothly. So I would certainly recommend that to whoever is the next student representative, as it was informative and it was a pretty fun experience. Thank you.
Owen, too. I think one of the things that is different in most communities is most communities don't have a student representative that's been here for three years. They have somebody who's probably just starting as of September. And so I think we're very fortunate to have you and have your background. The unfortunate part for us is, at the end of this year, that ends. And so, but we look forward to that for you. So thank you for all that. And the other piece I wanted to mention, too, was there is a piece every year on the Saturday for the MASSE, MASCE conference, which is in, I believe, the second weekend in November this year.
Yes.
And so if you're interested in that, that'll be a much larger group of the student leaders, so I'll send you that information again, and we can talk about that, because I'm definitely going to that, and if you want to come, you're more than welcome to. Questions for Owen before we move on?
What time is the basketball game on the eighteenth?
Basketball game, I think it's around four to four-thirty. I know it's a mid-afternoon game, so all those sports teams will be coming after their practices.
I think one of the things Ryan wanted to do, just so everyone knows, especially for games like that, is they've really, correct me if I'm wrong, Owen, they've scheduled games so that every varsity sport, including the unified basketball team, has a game when there's nothing else sports-wise going on, so everybody can attend. And that'll, that really runs from, I believe, Tuesday through Saturday before the dance. And so every team has sort of their own game in which they can be the highlight of the sports programs.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I wonder if there would be a way for the superintendent to tell all the teachers at the high school, just go a little easier on the homework for that week, and maybe no major exams, so that they can attend all of them and have huge turnouts for every one of those sports, sporting events.
I'm sure Mr. Brandigan will be sensitive to that. Mr. Chair, if I might, Owen, you are very involved in the statewide. You've run for office, you've done a lot of the student council. Were any of those students that were at that, that day of conference, were there anybody? Was there anyone you knew?
Not that I knew personally, but we had discussed like other things that we did, and a lot of them were in their school executive boards. Some of them went to the MASCE, the other MASCE conferences. So I didn't know any personally, but there's some familiar faces.
But you had some common denominators anyways. Good.
Student leaders and student leaders.
Absolutely. Any other questions for Owen?
Is he thinking?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, are you thinking, Owen, are you thinking about who your predecessor, who, I mean, who, I'm sorry, who will succeed you? Successor will be in that seat? Are you thinking about that right now?
I have some names thinking about. Just want to engage their interest in it, too.
Nice.
Mr. Chair, so they didn't turn it off? Okay, good. Thank you. Owen, I just wanted to ask, can you explain to me a little bit about the process of how someone is chosen to be the student representative?
I know last time, the student before me had graduated, so we were without one. So I think it was more hastily, I remember it was actually after the homecoming dance, Mr. Brandigan was talking to my sister. He said that they needed to find someone, and I jumped in and volunteered for it, and I've been here ever since.
Got it.
But I think this time, I'm going to try and find someone that, first of all, is like, suits the position, and then also has the interest to carry it out.
I also believe it's a decision of the executive board.
Yes.
So the executive board of the school gets together, and Mr. Brandigan makes a recommendation to them. Because in the past, some, what some places will do, just so you know, is, for example, you may not get a student who can commit. And so in the past, I know Mr. Brandigan and I have talked about, that some schools have allowed the executive board to be the student representative, and they rotate. And so they try to, there's somebody representing at a meeting, but then it's upon, generally speaking, the chair of the school committee meets with the executive board to go over and work with them. So it depends, and I'm fine with that, and as Owen knows, it all depends on sort of, obviously, people who can commit and their ability to commit at a certain level.
And I would say, Owen, that you got to make sure that your profile as a student, as you move on, includes this activity that you've done.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it does.
It does.
And maybe a letter of recommendation from the chair.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Owen? The next item is reports from school committee members. Do any members have anything? Mr. Oakley?
So I actually saw Owen at that same place. I was there for a little different reason, but for the charting the course. What was cool about that is, this is a big world that you guys are in, and I've kind of dropped into it, and, you know, I'm doing my best to ask about acronyms and, you know, things that are just not in my world. But it was really nice to talk to some of the other school committee members. A lot of them are very new also. I guess it makes sense, because it's an intro course, right? But one of the things that someone said to me that just wasn't obvious to me until they said it was, I had kind of expressed that there was a lot that I needed to learn, and they said, "Well, you know, just start, just start asking for stuff. Ask for, you know, whatever you think would be helpful." And I was thinking, and I'd like to get the rest of the committee's opinion on this, too, about what helped you the most when you first started, but I was thinking I'd be really interested in trying to get my hands on some, like, some data that would help me to understand performance, I guess, around. And I think I heard a little bit of it from Melanie last meeting about the STAR 360 stuff, and I was curious if that's something I could, I could see.
Absolutely. That data's coming up. There'll be an important meeting coming up on the MCAS data that's just rolled out this week. So we've just begun to dive into that as an administrative team on Wednesday, and we'll follow up on a full meeting on October fourth in preparation of our next school committee meeting, where all of the information will be disseminated in terms of the data and what we have.
Cool. Mr. Chair, when that data is presented to us, typically, we look at year-over-year, past years. We look backwards, we look forwards, we look at cohorts. So you're looking, this year's ninth, this year's eighth, that were last year's seventh, and the year before's sixth, so you look at that cohort. So you can see growth within the cohort themselves. But then they also look at, you know, this year's sixth, last year's sixth, and the year before, whatever, however you want to word it. But they'll look at that. It looks at, you look at it both ways, because you're looking at it from this way, and you're looking at it this way, which is kind of nice. That is one of the biggest things, is waiting for that data, seeing that data in the standardized testing piece. That's a big piece of it. Looking at some of the, just to throw them out there, some of the improvement plans for some of the schools that are out there floating around. There's not, to me, those are the two real biggest things. And then old minutes, old minutes for meetings. If you're trying to figure out, you know, how we got someplace, minutes, but you're talking about reading a lot of minutes. And our secretary is very good at writing minutes, so they're twelve to fifteen pages for a meeting. So, but those are the big things that, and then the other thing I always suggest is, and we've always talked about, is every non-union contract and every union contract. So if you have every union contract, you know the six unions that we have and what is in those by looking at them. But then you look at all the non-union, the administrative contracts, and how they are laid out. That way, you have that. I had started something a while back, and I've never stopped putting stuff in. It's really, it's, we call it like the new, new person package. And I've been working on that, and it's never really landed off the ground. But I'd like to continue with that at some point.
Greg?
So I just want to say to Mr. Oakley, I appreciate your questions, because sometimes, especially as an educator, been on the committee for a few years, we get used to certain terms, and sometimes having a new person come in and say, "Hey, what does that term mean?" helps everybody who's watching from home, isn't as familiar. So I, yeah, I think asking questions is a great, great way to do it.
I would also add to what Brian said, Rich, which is, for me, the biggest piece is the budget. It's that one piece that we ultimately have control over as a school committee, and it's one of our two major responsibilities, that and oversight of the superintendent. But that's where we really, you know, we don't get to decide on day-to-day operations of the schools. We don't get to decide on personnel issues. But what we do get to decide on is where the money's allocated. And for that, you know, that, in my mind, that sets the tone. And so, you know, I've seen committees that have, you know, been real rigid about how money's spent. I don't think we've been that way. I think we've been open and really tried to engage administrators in, in discussions. I know when Mr. Stevens and I did it last time, it was, it's helpful for me to sit with the administrators and find out what they want. Now, sometimes, you know, we sort of bother and say, "Okay, we can do one thing. Explain to me what your biggest priority is," and then we'll sit there and say, "Okay, how come not this? Or how come not that? Why did you choose this?" But in the end, we're really taking their recommendations and moving the forward.
But through you, Mr. Chair, again, that data that we have does drive decision-making. And it drives decision-making in a number of areas. I'll throw some more acronyms out at you. SIPs, PD, and BBB, which is school improvement plans. And then professional development and building-based budgeting. So if a school looks at their data that they have, and it indicates that their math scores are not as high as they should be, then we bring professional development in for math, which we've done with Susan Looney, who's a consultant that we have at the elementary level. We've also applied for grants, and we have the ST Math Grant that's in. ST being spatial and temporal lobes of the brain, that's what that, and it's from the One Eight Foundation, which is a mass STEM hub, which provided us with that grant, as well as the Project Lead the Way Grant. So there are a number of things that the data drives, and certainly those are three of the more important ones amongst them, including the professional development piece for faculty is an important piece. And the Leslie Initiative at the elementary level, the work that the Nichols is doing now with their literacy initiative is going to be important moving forward. So all that's driven by some of the data that we have, no doubt about it.
I do want to say one other thing, too, which I think is important. Especially, Owen mentioned it, and I know you mentioned it before, Rich, which is, when you go and you meet with other towns and hear sort of horror stories at times, and then realize, "Hey, we don't have it that bad here. Things are going well." One thing that I'm really impressed with, and I don't see in other places, when they do the presentation of the data, you will see everything they do well. Okay? And some places just focused on what they do well. We don't do that here. We also take a really strong, critical look at what's not going well. And the reason is, you know, you sit there sometimes and hear about everything that's going dandy, and then you're like, "Okay, we're at the highest level." Well, no. Okay, wait a minute, we just spent an hour talking about this. Here, we talk about the problems that we have and what we're doing to correct them. And some of them are easy. I mean, I go back to when, I think, I first started, and Brian remembers, we had a group of children who did really lousy in one grade set because it was a bunch of questions on mythology.
The category of theorem.
And what we found out was, we weren't teaching mythology until May. And they obviously weren't getting used to what was happening. So yes, do we have to cater to the test? We absolutely do. But that's, that's an example where people really took, looked at it, broke out the questions, compared it to how the kids were doing, and said, "Okay, this is why this is a problem. Let's make a change that in some ways is pretty easy." Some things are harder. I think we've seen over the points that our special ed subsets have had some issues, and we've really worked hard to develop those issues and to help them. And that's part of, you know, what we've made some decisions on. For example, like family resources with some of the families we have, and the after-school programs that we've been involved with, especially with the rotary rays and everything like that. So that's one thing I'm proud of. We really take a critical look at the negative, too.
And Mr. Chair, to Mr. Givenoni's point, we need to realize that the new MCAS is just that. So comparing cohort groups is going to be much more difficult at this time. We can compare some from this year to last year. A quick example of data would be our district-wide data for MCAS. There's going to be much more on this the next meeting. But we are designated as a district as we are meeting our targets. And they come up with a percentage point from zero to ninety-nine on how well we're meeting our targets. We're meeting our targets at seventy-eight, seventy-eight percent, all right, okay? That means we're not ninety-nine. We're above the seventy-five, which puts us in the category of meeting targets, but how do we get higher? And that's the question. So we're in a good place, but we could be better. So that's where that data drives us, and we go from there. But that's just a little snippet. We're not requiring assistance. There are districts who are requiring assistance, and we're not in that category, which is good. So we're, we're moving in the right direction, and you'll see that from the data. But we're not, we haven't reached our goal, so.
Yes, sir.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Oakley, I have not been here much longer than you, but one thing that impressed me the most coming here was the protocols that this board sets up to keep moving forward and things like that. Mr. Young, on my first day, he's like, pay attention to those protocols and what they are. And I understood why this board runs so smoothly and why it continues to progress forward. So things like that, I think, really help you kind of understand the direction and goals of the board, so.
Comments? Any other comments not to do with Mr. Oakley's comment, but any others' comments? Mr. Rob?
Last night, I get to go to the MKG Open House, and I just want to thank all the staff for being there with smiles on their faces as the humidity really kicked in and it really got warm with all the, not just the kids, but their parents running through that building. And I just thought it was really nice. My daughter loved showing off her school on her little scavenger hunt through it, and it was really nice to see all the staff supporting, you know, each other and the parents and the students last night. I also get to participate in, well, attend the bat run a couple of weekends ago, and Mr. Oakley was there with his 3D-printed bat mask. And I just want to say, I love the fact that Middleborough High School and Mr. Brandigan supports that cause, and Jesse and everything else it stands for. I think it's one of the best events we have in town. And with the construction coming up, I hope the town finds a way to continue to support that run, because I do feel it's one of the best ways this town comes together and show off the best things we have.
And to piggyback on that, I do want to say that I had the great fortune of running a water station for the bat room. And I was, and I got to say, Owen, that I was overwhelmed at the number of high school kids that participated. A lot of the teams participated together and ran, ran as a group. I thought that was, I know it was, I know it was meaningful as a parent just being on the side there handing out water. And Mr. Oakley was impressive with the 3D bat masks, so I got to give it up to him. Mr. Givenoni, did you have something, my friend?
I had something this evening. I mean, fall sports, as we know, are in full swing, so I was attending the cross-country meet. My son does run. And the boys and the girls both had double wins.
All right.
It was a three, it was a three-team cross-country meet, and I believe Abby Wager broke the record for the girls' time on the course tonight. So that was really cool. And Adam ran awesome today. I was without, usually has a support ESP with him running, and he did not run with an ESP. He ran with the team. Came in, I think, tenth place overall, which is awesome. That was probably the highlight of my day with that, was seeing Adam come across the line, so.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Oakley?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to, if it's okay, put in a quick plug for something that's going on with the new community maker space.
Sure.
We just put out, in, well, we had our curriculum meeting a couple of weeks ago and have set up a pretty, thanks to, thanks to Melanie for her help on that and to everyone else for all of their really kind of specialized expertise. But we just put out invites to six kids that have self-identified interests, and their teachers apparently also recommended them. We just did that today. The first group is a test group, so we wanted to pick the people so that we could make sure that they were interested and give us the highest chance of success and learning. So anyway, I look forward to reporting back to you guys on the success of that first group that will end at the end of December. And then we'll be starting with our first kind of series of applications.
That's fantastic. Before we get out of this topic, I do want to read a letter that Mr. Silver sent, myself, the superintendent, and Owen, because I think it's important. And he said, "Hello, everyone. I wanted to reach out to say thank you to everyone who had a hand in getting unified basketball up and running. It has truly been a team effort. It was so great to see the smiles on our students' faces today and some of their parents at their first practice on a Middleborough High School varsity team. The coaching staff and partners exceeded expectations. I am very thankful for everyone who has volunteered their time to make this possible. I can't wait to see this team in action all season. Please feel free to forward this message to anyone I may have missed that helped out behind the scenes. Again, thank you for all that you do." And I should also add, too, because I think it's, it just shows the level of interest of the kids, too, that Mr. Silver asked for that first game for that week, the varsity basketball captains are going to referee that game between the two schools, so that should be fun. And so I'm very proud of that.
Do you get shirts?
I believe so. They're getting shirts, because shirts make it fun. And not Foot Locker shirts, real referee shirts. Moving on, we'll move to the super, oh, Mr. Cuttino is not here tonight. I do want to make mention that Mr. Cuttino is in his last chemo program. And he wasn't, he told us he would not be here tonight, but he also told us it was last. We do want to wish him well and hope he gets well soon. So without, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience. I will start my report tonight with the employment status update, but I will go to the third position, which is the Director of Business and Finance. Happy to report back to you that we, myself, the chair, and Ms. Sarah Hickey had a chance to meet, agreed to terms, and she will officially begin her duties on Monday, October first. She's in the audience tonight, so congratulations to Sarah and welcome aboard officially, so.
I should also add, Superintendent Lynch, that although Mrs. Hickey doesn't start until Monday, not only is she here tonight, but she also attended the building committee meeting last night so she could get up to speed on the building for the high school, so I did want to bring that up.
Super. Thank you. First of all, Technology Office. We had a Assistant Network Manager position that was available. The folks in the Technology Office interviewed a number of people. They had two finalists that came my way. One was not agreeable to the salary limitations, was interested, but not agreeable. And then the second individual really was looking forward to it and actually jumped at the chance. The person is officially on board and signed. His name is Thomas Tidwell, and he is currently the Technology Director for the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District. And he will be joining us after his, after he is released from his duties, professional duties and responsibilities at the Bridgewater-Rainham District. He is, he has a forty-five-day release term, and I believe at this time, he's being held to that. But that was in his contract, so. Yes.
Because I know he's a very, very good.
Yeah, he's highly regarded by everyone in the district, and it really is a coup. I have been in contact, courtesy, with the superintendent in Bridgewater-Rainham and reached out to him. Suffice it to say that he's not overjoyed, but this was a wish that Mr. Tidwell had. He wanted to, he was given the position. The former position was, the former director was not rehired. He was provided with the position, and he was not, he basically didn't want the position, from what I understand. So he was looking, he was actively seeking. I assured the superintendent that I did not recruit him, that he was actively seeking. So therein is the position, and he will bring, he is a, he will be, he will bring a lot to the district. He's very knowledgeable. He runs the network over there at BR, very knowledgeable with just going from the basics, wiring all the way up through systems, which is great. Moving on to the John T. Nichols Junior Middle School Interim Assistant Principal. I've met with the final candidate there. His name is Joe Mackey. He is a longtime school administrator. He's been a school administrator in Winchendon. He's been a school administrator in the Vineyard. He was a middle school principal and assistant principal for approximately fifteen years. Worked out in the Vineyard as a curriculum coordinator, is retired, has been retired, was retired, and then came out of retirement to go to Randolph to be their sort of HR person. And then he is, went into retirement, and now he's basically coming back out of retirement. And he's agreed to terms, and hopefully, he'll bring his paperwork by tomorrow so that he can start on Monday. But he will be, he is someone with a lot of experience that can go right into that office and be able to supervise and evaluate faculty. He'll be able to work with parents and work with teachers and work with students as an experienced school administrator. So that will be an advantage, I think, to the school moving forward. And that's my report on the latest of our positions. Does anyone have any questions on those at all? Okay, seeing none. I wanted to move on to the AP Rally summary and just thank the members of the committee that were able to attend. Mr. Oakley was able to attend. Mr. Givenoni was able to attend. And Mr. Young was able to attend. We also had Representative Susan Gifford from the Twelfth Plymouth District. We also had Representative Kiko Orl from the Second Bristol District. And was that it for politicians this year, I believe?
Unless we count the former mayor, Tom.
And the, yeah, the town manager, of course, was there, and he, obviously, he was there, and he was very much interested and very excited about the opportunity. And if you look behind you on the screen, you'll see all of the students who are, who were members of that assembly and who are all either taking, have taken the AP exams or were there. And I believe most of the cheerleaders have taken AP exams, but they were there. The band was there supporting the students, but that's a good number of people. And if you look closely, you can probably see some of the adults in the photo that were there. Mr. Givenoni's way in the back row, so, but he's there. So I don't know if the school committee has any comments on their attendance that day. It's always fun. The first, the, we have a woman from Mass Inside who comes in and talks about our program, and it's just, is just awestruck each year. Each presenter, this was a different presenter this year, but each presenter is awestruck at this rally, and they make a point of saying that. And Owen was there also, obviously, but I don't know if any, any members have any comments on your attendance?
Mr. Oakley?
Sure. Yeah, I was just blown away.
Sure. Yeah, I was just blown away. I mean, there was one person in the audience in the middle that was taking four, four AP classes. I think I said this in my awkward remarks that I gave, but that I was scared to even take one single AP class, because I was kind of struggling through high school myself. I didn't have my awakening until much later. But, yeah, those are some impressive, impressive kids. So, it was just fun to be around them. It was real exciting.
And that was this year?
Right.
Taking four this year.
Mr. McCarthy?
How many AP courses will you take in the course of the time finishing here?
Eight.
Eight. Yes. Thank you. And I should also add that not only is it eight AP courses, but, correct me if I'm wrong, you will be getting a second diploma when you graduate a national diploma. So, that's, this, and Owen, in a lot of ways, is atypical for those kids in that classroom. You know, some of them may take one or two, but there are a lot who take six or seven or eight courses. And that should be commended. And speaking of that, I'm going to ask for something that we haven't done before, and I thought about it after the rally, that we should do going forward. And that is, prior to the AP exams being given, what I'd like to do is have the AP kids come here, invite them here, and prior to our meeting, hold a reception in the cafeteria for them. We can just get some cookies and stuff like that and invite them out and then bring them down when it's time. So, if no one rejects, chair would entertain a motion in that regard.
So moved.
And so, yeah, I think this is an opportunity for us to, kids who are academically gifted, and that's what our school is truly about. It's not about the clubs and the other programs. It's about offering opportunities to exceed academically. And I just thought, after I walked away, I was thought, what could we do, you know? I think Paul does a fantastic job with this rally. And I think it's the least we could do is just hold a reception for them and let's go. So, any further comment on that?
Mr. Chair, I think one of the things that we see is, and you'll see outside of our district is the same way, is the celebration of sports rallies and all that. But one thing we do in our district is we celebrate all achievement, including the academics, including the arts. I mean, we really, I mean, everything we do is, we celebrate all of it. And that's that whole culture that's at that school. And I just had a parent say to me tonight, my child does not want to go here or there. They want to come here, and they don't live in our district. They see the culture of what's going on. And I said, well, we do have some, depending on the grade, some space.
Mr. Chair, I went before the board for the Mass School Building Authority. I've shared this probably before with a committee of a different composition, perhaps. But we were describing, myself and Mr. Brannigan, were describing the educational vision and the plan for the school, and had basically summarized our history and how well we've developed the AP program and how we have one hundred and seventy-four students involved and going on. And one of the women on the board said that she thought that we were focusing too much on academics and not enough on the balance. And at which time, Mr. Brannigan and I described the balance that is present at the high school, that there is a great balance. But there's nothing wrong with accentuating the positive and talking about those kids who do really well. And we want to challenge the kids. And she was also surprised to hear that we open our AP classes to every student. And that is not always the case in Massachusetts school districts. So, but that being said, I know Owen wanted to say.
At the MASC Student Leader Conference, we talked about scheduling. And I think we were the only school there that AP was open to any student. So, there are big issues where kids were, you're stuck in the track, a CP honors or AP track. So, I think at the rally, Mr. Brannigan, Mr. Brannigan had said that just take one AP, just try it out. You'll always be able to switch out. But we saw the stats of taking one AP, even if you don't get a five on it, your college GPA is substantially better than if you don't take any.
Brannigan, did you have?
Yeah. I just love that idea, because we can't go to this.
Right.
So, for us, it's a really good way for us to be able to congratulate them and commend them for all of their hard work.
So, I'll work with Mr. Brannigan and find out the best school committee meeting to do that at. And we'll, like I said, we'll start it early. We'll have a little reception in the cafeteria, as long as everyone votes for that. And then we'll bring them to the meeting and introduce them to the community. So, yes, Mr. Rob?
Was this, Mr. Chair, was this before or after they take the exam?
Before.
Before.
So, what happens is they all.
Do you think we could have it after?
We can. The only reason I was thinking was before was, you know, sometimes it's, some of them are late, and, correct me, and then you run right into senior week. And it's a boom, boom, boom. And so, this sort of gets, because we do have a group of seniors.
More like a pep rally.
Right. So, it's more like a pep rally for us and just say thank you. And as everyone knows, we give good snacks usually right before tests. So, this would be in addition to that. We can look at that, and I'll talk to Mr. Brannigan about that. But that was my only concern, was you're going to miss some seniors, because we start to roll almost immediately after that into the senior week.
That is true. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much for that.
Mr. Chair, I'll just continue with my final item of the evening. Special Town Meeting is Monday night, Monday evening, 7:00 PM, Middleborough High School Auditorium. A lot of important articles for folks to decide in this town, one being the, our Article eighteen, which is trying to set up a special education account, revolving account that will travel from year to year. And we certainly hope that we get to vote on that. I'll be able to say a few words about that at the meeting. I believe I may, myself and Mr. Young, may also be providing a summary of the MCHS building project, because Rob DeRozia, who's the Chair of the Committee, is also the town moderator. So, he will maintain that moderatorship and allow us to do the summary. So, the folks at home, please try to attend that special town meeting. It's obviously always, always very important. But be a lot of this, a lot of town-wide discussion on a number of different ideas. But the school part of this is a simple, a simple article that basically establishes a carryover fund for special education funds that tend to ebb and flow and to get some constancy in some amounts that we can save. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem. I'll move on to MSBA update. We had a building committee meeting yesterday. We voted for the ninety percent submission to go forward. For those, the previous week who saw the Middleborough Gazette, the posting was for general contractors and subcontractors. Right now, we already have five general contractors who've come forward and say they will be bidding our project. And we've got probably close to, I would say, fifty subcontractors that have said they were bidding for various things. Of all the subsets that we have, I'm going to use subsets like fifteen times in this meeting today.
The list goes on and on.
Yeah, all required subbits. Thank you, my friend. The only, the only piece we do not have a multiple on is the terrazzo, the elevator and the terrazzo floor. But that's expected to come in, you know, it's only been a week. But so, we have multiples, which obviously, if you have multiples, mean competitive bids. And so, that, we're very excited about. Also, yesterday, again, with the ninety percent submission, we reviewed the budget. And again, we are under budget and well within the town's parameters. So, we are moving forward without any issues.
Mr. Chair, with respect to that, two different estimators have estimated this project, and they've really kind of worked their issues out. Sometimes somebody was higher by a hundred thousand on something. They figured out why that was. They really kind of got it down so that they're both with, I mean, less than hundredths of percentages of way. I mean, they're really close, which is good to see, two different, because the architect has their estimator and our OPM has their estimator. And that's been reconciled now. And it's still that same position, which is right where we want to be.
And to that point, Mr. Chair, if I might, they reconciled those estimates as a result of our OPM insisting on that happening. Because as a result of the sixty percent submission, the state provided feedback, even though they were within one percent, the state said they probably should be closer. So, you're going to work a little hard in that process. So, you know, our, Kristy Murphy, who's Steady Eddie, and she's really somebody that's been a great boon to this project, really sat these folks down together in a room with the RA, our designer, and really sort of banged out some of those items that might have been a little discrepancy. So, which was good. So.
One other thing we should mention about the estimators. When this project first started and we were choosing an OPM, it came down to about three OPMs that we brought back for second and third interviews. One of the OPMs had a cost estimator as part of their group that, to be quite honest with, if it was just about cost estimating, I think we would have chosen that person based alone because of the way they talked to us about cost estimating. Right after that process, she left that OPM firm and started her own cost estimator firm. And we convinced our OPM to pick her firm up, because we were so impressed, and they fell in love with everything she's been doing, and has continued to do other projects for them. So, she's been fantastic. So, it has been helpful.
Chair?
Please.
I mean, the level at this point, yesterday, we did have to take a vote on some kinds, some proprietary items. For instance, lock and door handle sets on, I mean, this is the level we're at right now. I mean, there are some big things still working on. But when you start talking about the Tumblr sets going inside the locks and this, and, I mean, that's the level of where it's at right now, which is right down to the end there, which is cool. There's another meeting coming up on October 27th. It's that last Wednesday of the month, whichever day it does fall. That's the next meeting, and we'll mention it our next meeting. And then the final hundred percent set goes in the middle of November, and goes out to bid.
And the proprietary items are items that we currently use in the school and are currently attached to various buildings that make sense for us. The other, for example, is, one of the communication pieces is the fire department has a communication piece throughout this town. And so, we want that same communication piece for the schools, so they can piggyback on that. There'll be obviously separate channels for the school, but they can go to emergency if they need to. So, that's there. The other thing we should mention, too, because I think is important, is for the first time, and not the last meeting, the previous meeting, we used our executive session privilege to discuss security. We went extraordinarily in-depth into the security of the building. And so, I think most of us feel very comfortable with what was decided and how we're proceeding. We're making some minor adjustments here and there. But.
Be the general, be the general overview of security in public session.
Right.
Without getting into the specifics. That general overview was so that if the public did see, they, because I always get the question, what are you doing about security? Well, I can't tell you. I can tell you, we're working on it. So, it was nice to have a general overview at the previous meeting. And then in the executive session, some, I mean, wow, some of the stuff. It's the only way to say it is wow.
Come a long way, got a long way to go. But we're probably. Probably, it's safe to say, we're probably almost at the midpoint of the calendar when you look at it. I mean, there's, there's the.
The whole, the club construction.
Yeah.
It's kind of interesting. Any questions about MSBA? All right. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
Do I hear it? Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. MASC, again, just a reminder, and this is the conference dates, Owen, that I told you about before. It's usually the 10th is the last day with students. The conference is November 7th through 10th. And just in case anyone could make it, I got a notification from MASC today that they're extending to the 30th the early bird discount. And then after that, it'll go up. Rich, you attended chatting the course. Did you want to add anything else? You're pretty much all set with that?
No, no, I don't think so. Yeah, it was really interesting.
Cool. School Committee Workshop on Operating Protocols. From everything everyone sent me, it looks like we'll do October 2nd and do it at seven o'clock. And we have a choice. We can do it at the high school or here. What would anyone prefer?
What's easiest?
I mean, it might be, we rarely get to the high school sometimes, so maybe just do the high school.
Use the career center?
Career center or the library, depending on what's available.
It's all affected, Paul.
Thank you.
No problem. I'll have that posted.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow. It's not bad, because technically, we post it Monday, because it's seven o'clock. But I'll get it posted tomorrow.
It's about here tomorrow.
What? No, that's fine. So, we'll get that posted. Not a problem. Yes.
Sorry, is that 7:00?
7:00 PM.
Okay, thank you.
Because somebody said there was an issue earlier, so I knew 7:00 PM was going to work. So, we'll still work on the policy subcommittee as soon as we get through the rest of this stuff.
That's another thing you want.
Oh, geez. About our PZ, as a PDF.
Yeah, feel free to look at all that. Other, this is some conversations about field trips and donations. Again, just so everybody is reminded, especially at home, we are moving to the second and fourth Thursdays. Anybody have anything before I ask for a motion to adjourn?
I mentioned that at the select meetings meeting the other day. I think we've made that switch from first, thirds, to second and fourth, if they.
Any other questions before I move? The Chair wants to stand a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And we'll see you in two weeks.